First, I want to thank you all for coming. We in city government love to hear your opinions, get your thoughts, talk about city issues. But I wanted to speak or introduce you to a couple of the elected officials that are here today. Tom Lopez, the Ward Four Alderman is right here. He's got the local politician hat on.
Nope.
Cindy Rosenwald is the state senator, of course, from District 13, which includes Ward Four. And at some point, we may have Cindy tell us a little bit about what's going on in the legislature, because she's very active with the budget, and there's a lot of changes there being proposed. So usually, I just speak for a few, talk about a few of the things that are going on in the city, and then, for a little while, and then take your questions and comments about anything you'd like to talk about. And we usually try to take about an hour, and so you'll come back next time, not be too bored. First, I mean, I cannot talk about what's going on in the city without getting into, to some degree, the changes in Washington, because they could significantly affect us here in Nashua. And I'm speaking particularly about the budget cuts and the tariffs that are being imposed. Let's take the tariffs first, as an example of how this could impact city government and city taxes. So the Board of Aldermen, the city, myself, have been considering for some time a new public works garage. The public works garage we have now dates to the 1970s, was actually federally funded, was a federally paid-for building, was never the greatest building, and it's not in good shape now. It's about half the size we need. We have to keep a lot of equipment, very expensive stuff, outside, causes quicker deterioration, and therefore, more money over the life of those vehicles. So we're considering a new public works garage, which is now in design. Although the final cost is not yet determined, that can't really be decided until the design is complete and it can be put out to bid and all that. But we do have what's called an owner's project manager, as well as a selected contractor. Contractor is going to be the one that does the work, and the owner's project manager holds the contractor to, is an expert in the field, and holds the contractor to the terms of the contract. They're roughly estimating that the tariffs will add $4 million to the cost of this garage. So what does this mean? It means that if we go forward with this project, this will pass $4 million of extra costs onto the Nashua taxpayer, to the city, hence the Nashua taxpayers. And it means that really, the federal government, instead of paying for the building, as they did last time, is now taxing the city to go forward with the public works building replacement. And just as an aside, if this project goes forward, the old public works garage would no longer be necessary, and it would be possible for Conway to expand their facility into a second rink. The budget cuts. We and city government receive a lot of federal money, much of it sort of filtered or directed through the state of New Hampshire. And we, it's complete uncertainty, but we rely particularly on federal money in several areas. Number one, in the schools here, this is a, Led Street is a Title I school. That means they get federal Title I funds to help supplement the teaching force. Across the city, we have about, in various, we have six Title I elementary schools, and we have about 50 Title I teachers paid for by the Title I program. And the idea is these teachers are focused in schools where there are a higher number of free and reduced lunch-qualified children, meaning they come from families who are below a certain income level. Were we to lose that, it would have a very significant impact on public education. The bus system. Certainly, there's local money that goes there, but like all mass transit systems across the United States, we get federal funds to make that, make that bus system possible. Were those, were we to lose those funds, we could not operate the bus system. We have been notified, just in the last few days, by the state of New Hampshire, that some health department grants that we got are ended. I think to the tune of a couple, $174,000, I think, is the estimate given me, to me by Bobby Bagley, who's the director of Public Health, Community Services and Public Health. These funds have been used to pay for community health workers, who do a number of things, but one of them is to try to mitigate the homeless problem. They go out and they meet, among other things, meet with, meet all the homeless people and try to work with them to get them moved on to a more successful situation. That can involve getting them an ID, finding an apartment, trying to get a mental health care, or into drug treatment, you know, various things like that. Now, we do have a non-federal source of funds for these workers, so we may be able to use that. And what that is, is the opioid, what we call the opioid abatement money. This is money that we received, as Nashua received, as a result of the fact that we were a plaintiff in, meaning, one of the parties joined in bringing a case against the drug company of Purdue and others that were manufacturing the Oxycontin and other addictive opioid drugs. Those cases settled, and therefore, every year, we get a certain amount of money. That money would be eligible to help pay for these community health workers. We think we will lose two of them, but at least there's a non-city source of money that could at least support these people for the next couple of years. So those are some of the areas that we could be affected in terms of actual city operations. But I think we also have to be concerned about the impact on people in our community who receive Medicare, the expanded Medicare that Cindy can tell you all about. We have over 16,000 people in Nashua who are on Medicare, Medicaid, 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 sorry, Medicaid. I'm on Medicare, so I get that. Medicaid is for lower-income people. Over 16,000 people are on Medicaid. And were those funds to be cut, and there's a trigger that Cindy can explain, but were those people to be cut off, they would obviously suffer severe health consequences. And there's even been some talk about Social Security being affected in some way. Obviously, we have a lot of people, seniors, who are on Social Security. Yes?
If Medicaid is too heavily cut, would you see greater Nashua?
Yeah, and Tom is pointing out, we would, we would, there are many healthcare providers who rely on Medicaid funds, Lamprey, Harbor Care, even the hospitals, to a fairly significant degree, rely on Medicaid dollars to support themselves. But turning to strictly city issues, we are still very aware of the fact that the two revaluations that were done in '22 and previous to that had a significant impact on property taxes in Nashua. Now, these were, I mean, we are required to do these revaluations by state law, and we conduct them pursuant, and then they're supervised in every detail by the State Department of Revenue Administration. But they do not collect more revenue, but what they do is they require that all properties be assessed at 100% of fair market value as of April 1st of the year in which the revaluation is done. Because the home values have gone up so much, and the commercial properties, such as the Pheasant Lane Mall, one of the biggest, or the biggest taxpayer in the city, did not go up, and in fact, we litigated with the Pheasant Lane Mall, and their taxes actually went down, or their assessment went down, and so did their taxes. The revaluation pushes the tax burden towards the homes, because you have to assess taxes based upon these total assessments. Prior to the revaluations, homes were only about 2/3 of the value of the, this is just the last one, but 2/3 of the value of the city, after the revaluation, more like 70%. So the homes go from paying 70, from 67% of the tax burden to 70%. So we are very well aware that that caused an impact and hardship for a lot of homeowners. So we have tried to do everything we can to keep the tax burden down. Two years ago, in the fall of 2023, I and the Board of Aldermen worked together to ensure that the tax rate went up less than 1%. This year, I asked the departments to stick to a 3% budget increase, about the rate of inflation. We do have some wage contracts which exceed that number, police, for example, but I believe by and large, we'll be able to keep the operating departments to that level, in an effort, again, to try to mitigate any effect on the, on the tax rate. But like every year, the city, and in the end, the Board of Aldermen has the final determination, because they vote on the budget and they have to pass it. It is always a difficult decision. Do we, how do we maintain the level of services which people rely on, that is, police, fire, schools, public works, you know, garbage, plowing, and all that, while at the same time, trying to keep the tax rate to the lowest possible level? Now, sometimes, people come in and say, you know, just cut the budget, you know, it's all waste, this type of thing. Well, 80% of the budget is city wages and benefits to employees. Where are the largest number of employees? Schools, then police, then fire, then public works. And so if you want to see a significant increase, a significant impact, significant reduction in any kind of budget at the city level, you're going to need to cut the labor force, meaning, less teachers, layoff police, close a fire station, something like that. That's the only way to achieve very significant savings in the tax rate. And I think the judgment of the Board of Aldermen, and I believe of the community as a whole, is that those kind of cuts are not in the community's best interest. So again, we're going to try to maintain the level of service without raising taxes inordinately. The, one thing I should mention, since we're here in Ward Four, and part of Ward Four is the former Mohawk Tannery site. We do have a plan to clean up that site and add much-needed housing in that location. This is a collaboration between the EPA, who's coming up with millions of dollars, the city, the state, all together, working to clean up this site. Now, what, what, but it needs to be an EPA-approved plan, which we've agreed to. Without their money, it could not be accomplished. And hopefully, that this money will not be cut by the administration. So the, all of the waste from the tannery will be consolidated and put into a single place, it will be encapsulated and covered, which is the only way the EPA will do it, and they've done this successfully elsewhere. And then, on the site, will be developed 550 units of housing, 20% of which will be affordable. This project will probably take its whole, to do the whole thing, could be as long as 10 years, but the cleanup work, keeping our fingers crossed, should start this year and take the remainder of the year, and then the development of the site would proceed in future years. But we are working very hard all the time to provide housing for the city. We have a big, big shortage. You can see it in terms of the vacancy rate of apartments, it's less than 1%. Very hard to find an apartment, rents have gone up significantly because of it. And you see it in the value of the homes, which have, as I already mentioned, have doubled in not that many years. So we have, the Nimco site has a, has a proposed developer to build 250 units or so on Nimco, if you know where that is in the Mill Yard. It's now a city-owned site. There, we're talking about the redevelopment of Elm Street. We saw this Elm Street Middle School. We will have a couple of meetings there for, to take public input. You would, you would, if you care to go, and hopefully, you know, you might be able to, you will see presentations from two developers. Four were interviewed, but two were chosen as finalists. We wanted to get public input regarding your thoughts on how, which direction, they have slightly different proposals, which one you think is, is better. But we also have other projects. We worked with Neighbor Works to create a 46-unit affordable project across from CVS on Main Street. We worked with the Housing Authority to redevelop the Bronstein site from 40-some units up to, over 200, all of which are affordable. And there's other projects that you've probably observed that I could tell you about. But with all of that, I mean, there are many other topics I could address, I could address it tonight, but rather than going on much further, why don't we open it to your questions, and then in a few minutes, we'll take some thoughts from Cindy.
And just a reminder, we, we need to use this microphone that I'm holding for the video camera. It doesn't help us here, unfortunately, but it does go toward the video.
So this is, this is Kath Palmer, and Cindy's, so the idea is, we're going to put this on community TV, so if you want to be heard, you have to use the microphone.
I can't stay for the whole hour.
Okay.
So Mayor's absolutely correct that what happens in Washington is going to have a huge effect on what happens in New Hampshire. But right now, the House, the State House, is finishing its work on the next two-year budget. It's a moving target. I don't know exactly what's going to be in it, but I would say that the projected revenues are at least $500 million lower than what the governor proposed in her February budget. So big reductions. I think the three biggest issues in the budget will be cuts to Medicaid, and I'll talk more about that, education funding, which has a big property tax impact, and what the state is doing to help the cities and towns not raise property taxes. One proposal, so for a few years, the state has been sending 30% of the tax revenues generated by the rooms and meals tax back to the cities and towns. There's a proposal floating around to cut that to 25%. So take five percentage points off of what Nashua gets, and that's that. In terms of the education funding, the average across the state of what is spent per child, including all costs, is about $24,000. The state kicks in about $5,000 of that. There's a proposal, three different proposals from the governor of the House and the Senate to expand this school voucher program, where that $5,000 the state pays can either go to a family for homeschooling expenses, or to help them pay the cost, partially pay the cost of private school tuition. Now, 80% of the children who are using this program are already in private schools. And the way I look at this, and I've been doing state budgets, this is my eighth one, so 16 years, there is no marginal savings when a child leaves a public school district. In a place like Nashua, with 10,000 or 11,000 students, because you don't close a building, you don't get rid of a bus, you don't get rid of a teacher, you don't get rid of textbooks, you have no savings but $5,000. And I, it's not that many kids in Nashua who have signed up for this program, but $5,000 per child leaves the school district, leaving property taxpayers on the hook. So in terms of healthcare, Medicaid, which covers 180,000 people in New Hampshire, half of whom are children, is literally the underpinning of our entire healthcare system. There's a proposal to cut the payments to doctors, hospitals, nursing homes, physical therapists, dentists, everybody, by 3%. If that, if that moves forward, what we'll see is fewer providers willing to see Medicaid patients. And where we're particularly going to see the problems with that is in drug, drug treatment. And I think we would see our opioid deaths start to go up again, they really came down last year. And in the mental health crisis, because the community mental health center in Nashua really relies on Medicaid. So the mayor talked about expansion of Medicaid. This was something enabled under the Affordable Care Act. We've had it for 11 years. It's been incredibly successful. 60,000 people in the state participate, but the ripple effect goes way beyond that. Because, let's say that program were to go away, it would take $580 million out of the state's healthcare economy with it. It's about 5% of our healthcare spend. So that would have a really large impact on the access to care that everybody in New Hampshire has. You'd be waiting longer for a colonoscopy, a mammogram, cancer surgery, anything. So I'm waiting to see what finally comes across, and I welcome your input. If you go to the New Hampshire Senate website, my office phone number is there, and my legislative email address, and I welcome your thoughts. Thanks for letting me just jump in here.
All right. Well, thank you for coming.
If I'm honest, here, I'd be home for dinner by seven.
Yes. All right. Well, thank you, Cindy. So why don't we open to your questions, comments, anything you'd like to speak of?
Hey. Speaking of the commercial property tax rates, the Nash Casino, opening recently down in Pheasant Lane, and the increase in revenues, we anticipate that coming into the Pheasant Lane Mall, do you see anything happening in the next, the next time that reevaluation, reevaluation comes around, where we have a better argument with the commercial property about the mall's not so worthless anymore, so we got to talk again about what you're providing to the city?
Well, so the question was about what impact will the Nash Casino have on the assessments and property taxes? First of all, it will definitely add to the tax value of that particular parcel. I mean, there's no question about it. Now, what we are limited in doing is assessing that at fair market value. Now, it's a lot higher than it was before, when it was an abandoned Sears store, but we don't know yet how much the, you know, at what value that will be set. And this is what, this is easily one that could get in litigation, and why is that? This is a standalone, one, one-of-a-kind property. So like, if you have a subdivision, and you have a, the question of how a house is going to be valued, you might have two or three sales, you know, within a block, and, or a few blocks, and so you can tell very accurately what the likely sale value of that house is going to be. But when you're dealing with something like a casino, there are no comps, you know, anywhere near. There are no sales of casinos like the one that was built there, and having gone on opening night, it is quite an elaborate facility. So our experts could say that, you know, it's worth X, and their people could say it's worth half X, and then there's litigation over that. But certainly, it will add value on that property. But I think your question implied, will it affect the value of the rest of the mall? And the answer is maybe. I mean, we have to see. I suppose if there's more traffic, if there's a spillover into the other businesses in the mall, it could affect their value. Now, the assessments have to be done as of April 1st. So the Nash Casino, which is finished, will totally be in the, will be totally added to the, to the tax base as of April 1st, that's coming up, well, tomorrow, right, tomorrow? In terms of the potential impact on the rest of the, of the rest of the mall, probably that isn't going to be clear as of tomorrow. But by next April 1st, maybe it will, well, hopefully, it will, increase the values of the mall properties in general, and help us with the tax base. Anybody have questions, comments?
I have one.
Okay.
So we're wondering where the new DBW, DPW is going to be built?
Where is it going to be built?
Yes.
Okay, so the question is, where, if we go forward with a new Board of, Department of Public Works Garage, where would that be built? It will be built in the, within the perimeter of the landfill. So you, if you've been out there and looked carefully, you might have seen that there was, the first phase of this thing was done in that the office, there was an office building for Public Works, and now it would be just behind that. And as I mentioned, the current garage would be vacated. I don't know if you remember where the Public Works Garage was before?
Yeah, CVS.
Yeah, was where CVS, yeah, right, right, yeah, right. So that was the old days, but, and if you remember that, Pete Benet died in the last couple of days. Now, he was the director of Public Works hired right after that, that Now, he was the director of Public Works hired right after that garage was vacated, and he served the city well for 15 years, and he died like in the last couple of days. So I worked with him before. Any other thoughts, questions? Yes?
Yeah, I'm--
Standby.
This is Dan--
Dan Spine from the National Inklink.
This is Dan--
Dan Spine, National Inklink.
From the Inklink, which is an online news source. We don't have a daily paper anymore--
No paywall, so it's free to--
But they have a free site, so it's great.
The clawback of public health funds to the National Health Department, is that part of the 80 million of the COVID funds that got lifted last week?
Yes.
Is that, in litigation, what's the likelihood, no resolution?
No.
Yeah. But it's definitely part of that 80 million.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
So they informed us that the grants were cut off immediately, as of, I think, last Wednesday or something. The call came in on Friday. And they, of course, are relying on the fact that they're not receiving the federal money, and therefore, we're not receiving the state money, but that is what we're dealing with. And there are other programs, I didn't even mention, that I think will be impacted. I mean, we were definitely notified, we have a $7 million lead grant, which over three years, these funds are used to de-led apartments, an expensive process, usually inner-city apartments, well, basically exclusively inner-city apartments, which makes them safer for kids, but we get an additional benefit, which is if the landlord accepts these funds, the landlord is required to keep the unit at less than a market rate, rent it for a reduced rent for five years. So it's an affordable unit for five years once the work is done. Now, Tom, you have anything you want to, Tom, our active ward for Alderman, do you have anything you'd like to add to, anything?
Yeah, particularly, I am concerned about losing the community health outreach workers, and we will have to, as the board, figure out how to sustain that. Because when you see all of the campsites popping up in Mind Falls, the people who are downtown, homelessness doesn't come quietly, right? There's a lot of behavioral issues that come along with it, there's a lot of desperation, there's a lot of need. So there's a direct translation between not being able to outreach and engage people positively and help them find solutions that will work, and them starting to create their own solutions and starting to create additional problems. I think this is something that Nashua kind of carries a lot, because the state also decided that we're the hub of the regional mental health center. So this is where Greater Nashua's worked for hundreds, like over 100 years now. And it's great to have the community mental health center and two major hospitals and all these programs in Nashua, but the state doesn't seem to have any loyalty to that. And so they're cutting funds and saying, oh, good, we save more money to give certain people tax breaks, or to encourage business development in other areas. But they're not attentive to what our situation is going to be here in Nashua. And I anticipate, because even in the best of times, there was a lot of friction between neighbors and people who are needy, well-meaning, intentional people suddenly confronted with people with very dynamic needs, and people aren't going to go away just because we stopped funding intervention programs. And the crises and circumstances aren't going to go away either. So I mean, this is going to be a difficult summer at minimum, and we're going to have to be very nimble. I think our nonprofit organizations are going to need a lot more support, because they're the only ones who are going to be able to pick up the ball. And to be honest, I think they might even be affected by the Nash consolidating all of its casinos, because now there's basically one place you can do that fundraising mechanism for versus a bunch.
All right. Thank you.
I have another question. I'm trying to--
Yeah, that's all right.
Back to Ed funding, if we're talking funding in general. So there's a meeting in a couple of days, talking about their 3 percent budget increase and the potential for an impact that's equivalent to roughly 70 positions in the Ed Department, and how to deal with those budget constraints. And I'm trying to reconcile, is that anticipating a loss of Title I in IDEA funding?
No.
Or is that separate, so if those got cut, you're looking at an additional hit for 60-ish equivalent positions?
So the question, if you didn't hear, has to do with the city budget, the 3 percent guideline we've given to all the departments, including the Department of Ed, and which, there's a meeting tonight and a public hearing on Wednesday, I believe, and this could result in the loss of positions in the school department. And the question is, does that anticipate a loss of Title I money? And the answer is no, it's trying to just keep the city expenditures down. I mean, the reason, I mean, the school department has been hit with a major increase in the cost of busing, 20 percent, or nearly $2 million, this coming year. Now, we asked the school department, and they explored the idea of entering a one-year contract, and the only proposal they got, they put this out to bid, one proposal from First Student, five-year deal, the cost would go up 20 percent in the first year, and then significantly for each of the years thereafter, not 20 percent. And so that is one of the cost impacts that they're dealing with. We did ask the school department to speak with First Student, would they agree to a one-year deal, to give us time to explore possibly other alternatives? Could the city take over the service? Would that be better? But they were, stonewalled might be too strong a term, but the First Student did not have an interest in like a one-year contract. And because First Student is the only bidder, and because they own all the equipment, in other words, the school buses, they, First Student, completely have the school department over the barrel, and the school department basically has to comply with their demands. And if they won't enter a one-year deal, there's really nothing the school department can really do, having a legal obligation to provide bus service. So that is one of the cost inflators that's having an impact there. So we may sort of adjust this 3 percent guideline to help with that to some degree, given that it's an extraordinary circumstance. But I think in the end, you will see some impact on the level of employment in the school department.
In that five-year contract with them, do they have an escalator for fuel? Because almost all the fuel in New Hampshire is produced in Canada. And it's going to really, it's going to really stretch--
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. We can ask that question, but, so the question is, what if the Canadian tariffs impact the cost of fuel for First Student? It's basically, will they get more money? And I did not ask that question, and I can, so we can get the answer. But along those lines, the city puts out a bid for gasoline every year, and oil. And we, unlike the First Student situation, we get more than one bidder. So that's good. So over the last, about two weeks ago, we awarded the bid to one company to provide oil, the other to provide gasoline for the next year. But in that contract was a provision saying that we have a fixed price, except that, if there's an additional tax, meaning tariff, that would be added on to the price. So there was, in those contracts, a cost escalator in the event there is Canadian oil, Canadian gasoline, Canadian oil, I guess, would be, even, I don't know, if it's refined here--
If it's refined--
There's still--
Irving refines, almost everything in New England. And the reason why it's price competitive is that it doesn't have travels far. So in order to replace Canadian inventory, the transportation inbound escalates our cost for energy quite a bit. And like 90 percent of the fuel for Logan, most of the fuel for, you know, it really is going to be a wild card, I believe.
Yes. So, yes, it will be a wild card. We're trying to inquire as to where they typically buy the fuel, trying to determine whether we will be affected by those tariffs. As an aside, just, I don't understand this war with Canada. They've been longtime friends and allies, we have many fringe Canadian people here, and it's a great country as far as I'm concerned, and why we're fighting with them, I don't really get. Anyone else have comments about anything?
Question?
Yes.
So with all the influx of new residents coming in, apartment buildings being built, is that going to increase the police force, more police need to be hired, more first responders being hired?
The question is, with new residents moving in, will we need to increase police force, fire department, et cetera? Possibly. I mean, I would say, well, first of all, one problem we have, one challenge that the police department has, is they cannot hire enough officers. So we have an authorized force of 181 sworn officers, plus there's some civilians as well, but 181 sworn officers. And that's increased four or five during the time I've been mayor this time. But, and Nashua's not unique here, they operate typically 14, it depends on the day, the week, the month, 14 down, 16, 18, 12, 10, you know, people retire, they get new officers, but they have not been at full complement for at least several years. So if we authorize more, it doesn't mean we can actually fine them. But I would add this, that the, like, particularly the downtown apartments are net plus as far as taxes go, because the downtown properties, I mean, there are basically three profit centers in the city, meaning areas where we collect more in taxes than we provide in services, in terms of the cost. Downtown, the South End, and Amherst Street. Take the High Street flats, now, there's almost, I'm not sure there are any schoolchildren in there. They're mostly, they're one- and two-bedroom apartments, mostly younger people. And schools are the principal cost of, that the city incurs. In terms of other services that are provided downtown, you know, there is police and fire, but that's just part of the overall. We plow the street, we don't pick up commercial garbage, so we don't pick up garbage there. And they pay about $350,000 in taxes a year. So there's no way we're spending an extra $350,000 because of that particular building. But ultimately, if the population of the city expands, we can anticipate, yes, that probably we are going to need additional people in police and fire. The census of 2020 was 91,000 people, roughly. The census of 2010 had been 86, so there was an expansion of 5,000 people over those 10 years. We are, I'd say, growing at about that same rate. Were there more housing, it'd probably be more. But when I encounter mayors through other parts of the country, I mean, some of these places in Texas, California, I mean, they're growing like 20 percent in a year. You know, it's unbelievable what some of these, how quickly some of these Sun Belt cities grow, you know? They double in 10 years. I mean, it's amazing.
Can I ask more trouble?
Yes. Okay. Controversial, well--
This one tends to--
Controversial question.
Tends to have opinions. I look at the ceiling and what's up here.
Yes.
And not everybody in the city is a U.S. citizen. I'm sure we have many legal permanent residents, people who are here via legal means, pay into systems that they don't necessarily get benefits out of, et cetera. With the political landscape, ICE, which has happened in Boston with somebody getting arrested mid-trial out of a courthouse, what is the city doing with the police department in terms of cooperation or not cooperation with ICE to protect the people who do have a legal right to be here and are due process?
So the question is about legal, how the city is reacting to legal immigrants who may be here and might be troubled by ICE or whatever. What's the police department's posture towards all this? Well, the police department has the same policy that they've had for decades, which is if they are asked to arrest someone who's here legally or illegal, whatever it is, for a crime, they go arrest them, and if they turn out to be illegal, they turn them over to ICE if ICE is looking for that. But they do not deputize themselves to federal enforcement efforts of immigration laws, because they believe that, you know, their prime mission is safety of, you know, law enforcement here in Nashua, and they got more than enough to do, and they don't have additional, they don't have really time or resources for additional duties.
When you say if they're asked to arrest somebody, you're talking about a warrant, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, like if, you know, if someone, if any federal officer, citizen or not, they say this person has been convicted of a crime, you know, they'll go arrest them, I mean, you know? Or they've been charged with a crime or whatever, they arrest them. They don't hold back because they're illegal, but they don't, they never do that, but on the other hand, they're not looking, they're not going into apartments looking for people's papers and stuff like that. Now, the police department is independent of City Hall, so they really make their own decisions on this, but we are not a sanctuary city, but we are a welcoming city, I believe, and we have, we've officially said that. We want people to feel welcome here. Now, these flags at the Dr. Chris, or excuse me, at the Sunset Heights School where I was recently, the flags represent the communities from which the kids, various kids come, the countries. Now, this may be the same. There were probably 16 or 18 at Sunset Heights. Here, I see there's like 40. It could be that we should ask, but the kids from Lead Street come from all these different countries. So that's how we, but everyone by federal law is prohibited from interfering with any kind of ICE actions. I mean, the police department, nor citizens, could not step in legally and try to stop someone from being apprehended. But unfortunate things can, in my opinion, occur. For example, there is or was a legal resident here who was an Afghani with his wife and five kids. Now, the reason this whole family is here is that the head of the household, so to speak, the man, was one of the Afghans who assisted the U.S. forces in Afghanistan, and therefore was given the right to come here to this country. But not a citizen, a legal resident. And he was allowed to bring his whole family. And he was attending classes at the Adult Learning Center. He got picked up by ICE. Now, this guy is not a criminal, he's here legally, he was an ally of the United States, he helped the U.S. military, that's why he's here. He was picked up by ICE, and I think his status is kind of unknown. Hopefully, he hasn't been sent back to Afghanistan, because if he has, I assume the consequences for him could be fatal, potentially, you know, very severe. They are not nice to collaborators with the U.S. over there, you know, the Taliban. So hopefully, his situation will be worked out. Senator Hassan is involved, and hopefully, he can come back, but I haven't heard that he's been freed or anything like that. This happened a couple of weeks ago. This happened a couple of weeks ago.
It's not isolated.
It's probably not isolated, right?
This is, this is why I was talking about due process. You commit a crime, there's a warrant out there, you've done what you've done.
Right.
But, right now, unfortunately, it's being politicized, it's used as, as an argument tool, and you have people that are, as you give an example, basically being disappeared with no due process, no warrant, no chance of court. And all people are do that by our constitution, not just US citizens, but all people in our country are due due process. So, I'm hoping, I guess the basis of my question is a point-blank ask of, we're not aiding and abetting disappearing people?
No, no. 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 Yes.
Thanks. Oh, hi. I hope you don't mind if I read this, I'm not used to coming to some of these.
That's okay.
I've been a Lead Street teacher here for 30 years, super proud to be here, probably had some of your children maybe. And I'm here for your vital support in enhancing our playground for students in the community. Our immediate goal is to develop a safe and engaging playground in a well-maintained soccer field in our inner-city area. This current playground is over 30 years old, it no longer meets the needs of our community. The recreational spaces are essential for health and well-being of our youth and our families. Unfortunately, many families in our area lack adequate facilities where children can play and participate in healthy activities, and establishing a new playground and soccer field would not only create a safe environment for physical activity, but also nurture a sense of community teamwork and belonging amongst residents. As you are aware, but maybe some of you are not, playgrounds are typically funded and enhanced by parent-teacher organizations. Despite the tremendous efforts to engage members, we currently have two parents and two teachers involved. While our PTO has done a remarkable job raising money for assemblies and enrichment activities, this project is significantly more expensive. While some schools in Nashua may have easier access to funding, this is a significant challenge for Lead Street School, and has been since I've started here 30 years ago. We recognize that funding and resources can be limited, but we're confident that this project will yield a long-lasting positive impact for both our students and our entire community. We are ecstatic about possibly collaborating with your office and the city to make this come to fruition. So I, I'm here to hope that we can work together, Lead Street, the teachers, the school, the kids, we do the grit, we do the work. I'm listening to everyone's concerns, and it's, I know coming about a playground in an inner-city area, but it is essential. And our kids, you know, as we continue to build up in this area, you know, and you kind of look around, where are our kids playing? Where are our families going? Where's, is there access to go to a soccer field so they don't have to rely on transportation? We really are a goal, we've been working, I've been working on the project for three years. The goal is to move it in the backfield with the space. And I've worked with Pam before she went over to the office, to the, to the mayor's office. And so I'm just here just to bring it to your attention, I, I think you're a little bit familiar with the project. In any way, or any suggestions, any help, it's not necessarily, you know, can you give us money? It's, it's really looking to, can you partner with us? Can you give us the right direction? Can anybody in the community help us in any way? Volunteer, anything. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and I heard what everyone said tonight with all the different issues going on. But I am here to represent my students, and I love this school.
Now, did everybody, could you hear all that? All right, well, first of all, thank you for, thank you for teaching here at Lead Street. We have a very dedicated teaching staff here and at our schools in general, so thank you very much for that. And I don't know where you are in terms of the money that's available, but I know playgrounds are very expensive. And beyond belief expensive, really, I mean, you think they're cheap, but they're hundreds of thousands of dollars, right? And, so, let's look at that, I mean, traditionally, as you pointed out, the PTOs, parent-teacher organizations have raised the money for playground improvements, but you're saying accurately that here at Lead Street, the parents aren't as affluent as other places maybe, and they can't give as much money or whatever.
I think you would see that, when you look around the play, the different playgrounds in the city, at the different schools, you would, you would see.
Yeah.
You know, there's something more elaborate and more up-to-date in funding, again.
Now, I know we were hoping that the Boys and Girls Club were going to be involved with this. They, the Boys and Girls Club is improving significantly, the street hockey court, which is out here, and gonna make that a much better facility where kids could play, but I know that doesn't answer what you're asking. So, we will look at, into the details and see if there's any assistance we can provide.
Even the soccer field, or having a space where there's soccer nets that the, in the community can use as well.
Is there enough room for a soccer field?
I believe, when we originally looked at the original plans, which are in the back, because this, the district has the land that still could be cleared back there, it's quite a bit of land in the back.
We'd have to cut the trees down and everything, I assume.
Yeah. Not 100%, they were coming out to do the measurements, and we're redesigning the playground, looking at, you know, the cost and kind of, you know, would that backspace be best to have a soccer field there, if it fits the regulations? And then revamp the current playground, which is parallel to Lead Street, which, which can, you know, the wires are really low out there, and so, we were just kind of looking to see if there's anything that, soccer field, soccer net, anything like that.
Now, there is some precedent for that. So, at Charlotte Avenue, there were two requests from the school. Number one, do the playground, which was hundreds of thousands. Number two, redo the, there was a, there was a baseball field that was not well-used. So, the city did not pay for a new playground, but we did go in and we built two, two smaller, you know, sort of junior-level soccer fields, which are still there, they look really good. So, certainly, there is precedent for, on school property, as, because the idea there is, well, the youth soccer can use those fields and stuff like that. So, there is precedent certainly for us doing soccer fields on school property, so we should look at the details, you know, look, look more at the details. But thank you for coming. All right? Yes, oh, Tom.
Just an update, because we have spoken about the, the playground as well. We're still waiting on the Los Amigos Playground, which Your Choice, Your Voice Funds were designated to five years ago. So I've asked Director Sullivan repeatedly for updates on that, and where the progress is, and I'm waiting to hear. That could be a potential resource for this. And then additionally, as you guys were talking about soccer fields, it occurred to me that on Ash Street, we put a footsole court in, which nobody had ever heard of until kids told us about footsole courts that are smaller, more intensive soccer fields, and it would fit in the footprint, and the one in Ash Street is used very regularly, so there are a lot of solutions that could be done, we just need ongoing communication to do it.
Yes. All right, any other thoughts or questions? Well, it's nearly seven, so we usually try to finish up in an hour. And I want to thank our teacher, what, what grade do you teach?
Second.
Second grade, our second-grade teacher here. I want to thank you all for coming. If you have questions or comments about anything, just contact us at the mayor's office, we like to get people giving us information and questions, so please don't hesitate. And thank you for coming tonight.